If you will, please stand.
Thank you, Ray. We'll call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Brent Couch?
Here.
Chris Hussein? Clement Ogunemi?
Here.
Garrett Harland?
Here.
Howard Austin?
Here.
Jennifer Keith?
Here.
Mark Cloud?
Here.
Ray Cordial?
Here.
Tricia Reynals?
Here.
Thank you for that. Can we get approval of last month's meetings from February 4th, 2025? That passes 9-0. Thank you, Ray. Before we move forward with table items, I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Sharon Trumberg.
Thank you, everyone. I want to take a quick moment and just express my gratitude for Patsy Christie. She started the Springdale Planning Office almost 30 years ago. There's never been anyone else that has led Springdale Planning. And her impact will be felt years to come. And her dedication and the commitment that she has to Springdale is reflected throughout our entire city. Everywhere you look, Quality Developments, the revitalization of downtown, the Southwest Overlay, RVS Boulevard, Dantison Parkway, Freezeback Greenway, I mean, we could go on and on. And I just wanted to take a moment for myself and all of our staff to really, really thank you for everything you have done. You've been an incredible supervisor, boss, mentor, and friend.
Well said. I'm going to also state while my time with Patsy has been shorter than Sharon's, the past three years serving on this commission with you has been an honor and I appreciate every minute. And I know you have a hard job and not a lot of people are cut out for it, but you've done an excellent job. And I'm just grateful to have the three years with you. Thank you. If there's any other comments that commissioners want to make, now's the time to do so.
I just want to echo what both of them said. And I have only worked directly with you for a short time, but been involved with a number of committees in Springdale and many things over the last few years. And we're going to miss you and thank you so much for your time and service. And we're excited to have Sharon stepping in and I think she's going to do a fantastic job.
All right, enough of that. Let's move forward. Table items? Well, I know that's what Patsy was thinking. Will you just move on? I know that's what you were thinking. I can see in her eyes. All right, we're going to review items that have been tabled tonight. R-25-13, R-25-15, L-25-06, L-25-07, L-25-08, B-25-12, B-25-15, B-25-16, and W-25-10. I don't think I missed any, but I may have. So those items will not be heard tonight. They'll be heard in future meetings. Our first item to discuss or table items from our last meeting, the first one is R-25-08 Elegant Electric LLC. The request is a rezon from A1 to C2 presented by Tristan Billings.
Hello. So my name is Brian Canales. I'm the owner of Elegant Electric. And so Tristan could not make it today.
Sure.
So I'm trying to rezone this to be like a parking lot and storage for the electrical company that I have built. And this is my first time here, so.
Take your time, don't worry about it. You're doing fine.
So I've been trying to use this property, you know, to keep storage, electrical equipment, my trucks. That's about it on the land. And I cleared it. It was completely abandoned when I purchased this land. I completely cleared it, you know, took all the trash out, all the debris of the property.
Thank you for that. Staff comments?
The rezoning request is not in keeping in line with the comprehensive land use plan and is not recommended for approval.
Any other public comment? Commissioners, any comments from the commissioner?
Yeah, kind of in the line with what Sharon just said with that whole development kind of being out there. We're just going through like the three phases of that development in the kind of the yellow green shading that I just see that more in line with residential kind of development through there.
When did you purchase the property?
I purchased it in last year, the beginning of last year.
Sure.
But I mean, that development didn't exist whenever we.
Right, it existed on paper, but you're right, it probably didn't exist out there as far as what you saw, for sure.
Correct. And I mean, pretty much like on Deer Street, all that area right there, it's unusable, you know, there's nothing there. It's just a big creek behind my land surrounds everything. I don't think there'll be ever a future development there. That's where the sewer, city sewer comes in on the other side of that creek.
Yeah, so unfortunately, the city use plan calls that to be residential for the most part. And so your request isn't in keeping with what we see best use for that area. And sometimes that can be difficult when you buy land thinking that you can do one thing with it and you may not be able to do that because of where it's located.
It was.
Go ahead.
It was zoned out as agriculture A1, so.
Correct.
How is that moving back to a residential?
Well, so right now, everything in that general area is either A1 or C or R1 or R2. And so that's what we're looking for in that general area to be one of those two things. So your request of requesting it to be moved to commercial doesn't line with that type of development. Any other comments? This will be called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Clement. That fails 8 to 1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is L-25-05. This is a large scale plan to review and be a motion subject to staff comments. We also have a handful of variances which will be called for the vote. And we also have a waiver request which will be a motion to forward to City Council for a recommendation from us. This will be presented by Half and Associates.
Hello, Commissioners. Patrick Floyd with Half Associates. We're presenting here a 5,000 square foot vehicle maintenance shop. It sits on about four acres. The development's going to sit on the west half, as you can see on the screen here. We've worked with staff through comments, providing a detention, working through water sewer layout. We are asking for a handful of variances and waivers. The thought behind that is this isn't so much a public facility or not having foot traffic. It's also sitting behind an eight-foot privacy fence. So as far as the foundation landscaping, the pedestrian connections, all of those things, those are what we're asking for waivers for. The side or variances, the sidewalk waiver, there is intention to develop the east half of this. It's also our dot right of way. There's no pedestrian connection at this time. So we're just asking to revisit that conversation on the sidewalk along 72 when that frontage develops. So that's a little bit about what we're asking for. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Staff comments?
The dry vaperin off of Thompson needs to be concrete to the right of way. Submit the R dot permit when it's approved and issued. And then the 10-foot sidewalk is required on Thompson for which a waiver has been requested.
For planning besides standard comments, five-foot continuous internal pedestrian walkways are required from the public sidewalk to the customer entrance and along the full length of the building featuring customer entrances. A variance B-25-10 has been requested. Waiver W-25-08 has been requested for street improvements, sidewalk on North Thompson. Provide at least two items listed under the central features and community spaces in the Springdale Commercial Design Standards with direct access to the public sidewalk. Variance B-25-10 has been requested. Provide three of the items listed under entryways in the Springdale Commercial Design Standards that feature clearly defined, highly visible customer entrances for each principal building on the site. Variance B-25-10 has been requested. Trash containers shall be screened from public view on all four sides with a solid fence, wall, or gate constructed to cedar, redwood, masonry, or other compatible building materials and shall be appropriately landscaped. Variance B-25 requested. Frontage and perimeter landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56. Again, variance B-25-10. Foundation and entryway landscaping is required per city. Springdale Commercial Design Standards variance B-25-10 has been requested.
Thank you. Couple of questions for me before I agree with that. Any public comment? Any Commissioner comments? We're not normally seeing this many variances. My first question is that did you meet with our staff to try to work through at least a handful of these? Are there any of these that you were willing to?
We didn't meet with staff on this. The use of the building is some of the, a lot of the reason for this. I mean, we're talking crosswind heavy equipment coming and going around here. Can you go back on the screen to where you had the variance? And there you go, that one. So like the dumpster screening is going to be behind an eight-foot fence. So as far as shielding from the public right of way, public shouldn't see that. Frontage landscaping, again, our intention is to develop the east side of this property, at which point we can revisit the frontage landscaping and the sidewalk along the right of way. Knowing it's not a public, for public type of commercial business, again, that was the reason for not having a sidewalk. It's also a sidewalk that's not being constructed along the highway. So you're not really tying it anything. With, let me see here, building foundation landscaping with those bay doors, if you want to go to the, thank you, here. It's goes into the, just a function of the development.
Is this C, what zone is this in? Sorry, I should know this, but I don't. Is it commercial C2 or?
I think it's C2.
So it feels like your application is more industrial in some way. I guess my question is, would you or your customer be open to a bill of insurance so we can come back and look at this in a couple of years? If there's additional, some of the things you mentioned, like 71 being redone and a sidewalk. So then you might add a sidewalk to connect to that sidewalk. Would that be something you'd be open to, just so we can review this in a couple of years and see if that dynamic has changed enough?
And that was what we were thinking as far as when the front parcel develops, the front part of the parcel develops, we can definitely revisit all of this, yes.
Okay, so you're open to that, a two-year bill of insurance? Thank you for that. Any other questions from Commissioners? Y'all want to do the variances at once? You want to separate them? Thoughts?
Are you agreeing to all of those for, open to that two-year bill of assurance, all the variance requests that you have on there?
All right, open the conversation.
I just want to confirm before.
I would like to revisit the frontage landscaping and the sidewalk along 72. Those two make sense to me that we'd revisit. I think everything internal to that screening that's around the building, those we just would not be revisited. So like the foundation landscaping, the dumpster, does that make sense, everything internal to that, the current development? So it'd really be the, and again, we can have the conversation, but that's my mind is we would revisit that 72 frontage.
So I'm thinking pedestrian flow should be revisited. Landscaping and potentially entryways. Let me back up. I need to raise central features and community spaces, depending on how, what you're doing with the office building in two years. So I'm with you. I think trash, if that's, if it's interior to your building or your property and it's only you going to see it, I get that. But I think, I think at least those three for sure.
That works. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, this will be called for the vote on the variances. Do we want to take these all at once or do you want to separate them?
I'm fine together, but does it just need to be worded or y'all have notated what you've just discussed?
Yes, bill of assurance is already agreed to. This will be called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Ms. Keith.
That passes 9-0 with the bill of insurance in two years. All right, now the next is a waiver. This will be a motion to forward to City Council with our recommendation to approve or deny. To have a motion.
Is this something you want to revisit with the bill of assurance as well?
I was assuming, yeah, I was assuming that was part of it too.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
On that, we won't be doing a fee in lieu if we revisit it, correct?
No, if that's what y'all want to do is do a fee in lieu, then it's just done with. Or, I mean, you can seek the full waiver. Or we can.
I think on this one with it being a state frontage, we would do the fee in lieu.
Okay, yeah, if that's what y'all want to do, that's, that's fine.
So the recommendation would be that we were recommended to City Council a fee in lieu for this particular request?
That's right.
Is that understood, Commissioners? That's what our, that's what the, that's what the, I want to say customer, but you're not a customer. The person in front of this gentleman in front of you is requesting is that we do payment in lieu. So I need a motion and a second.
Motion to send to City Council with a recommendation for fee in lieu.
Very good. Ms. Keith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Austin. That passes 9-0. And the final is approval for the large scale, a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Couch.
Second.
Second by Ms. Keith. That passes 9-0. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just see planning for details about the bill of assurance and when it's ready to sign.
Perfect. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Next up is W-25-06 Gennaro Trullio. I'm sure I butchered that. This is a waiver of street improvement sidewalk on Kelly Road.
Good evening. I'm the owner at 4255 Kelly Road, just looking for a waiver on a sidewalk. Currently building a house and just, I'm sorry, using the existing drive.
Understood.
That's about it. The terrain, it's a weird terrain with the slopes, so sidewalk doesn't make sense. There's no sidewalks anywhere around either. And Kelly Road is closed off by the new highway.
Right, so this is about to become a dead end. This is probably the only sidewalk waiver you will see me support. He's the last house at a dead-end street. The terrain is difficult. I don't think this would be a useful sidewalk for the neighbors.
Understood. Any other comments, public comment? Commissioners? This will be called for the vote. Oh, sorry, this is a motion to forward to City Council with a recommendation to approve or deny this gentleman's request for a waiver.
Motion to forward to City Council with the recommendation to approve the request for the waiver.
Motion by Mr. Hussein.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clement. That passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Next up is rezoning. Our first rezoning request is R-25-11 Little Valley Springs Trust. This is a request of a rezon from A1 to C2 presented by Kenneth Duck.
Good evening, everybody. We ran next into the, into the city after my building was already built. And I had a business there on Wagon Wheel Road and I sold the business last January. So the people that were renting it from me moved out, so I need to rent it again. And then I found out I need to get it zoned because it was A1. And we can go into before it was, it's already been approved Z2 one time. But anyway, I'm not changing anything. It's just an existing, it's my existing building, about 8,600 square feet. About half of its offices and the other half is a warehouse, so.
How long has it been there? How long has it been, how's, how long has this building been in this location?
Oh, let's see, 18 years, 19 years.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been there a while.
Sounds like it. And what about this house that you see there in front? Who is?
Yeah, that was my house and I sold it to my son.
Okay, and your son still lives there?
He does.
Okay. Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval. Encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail, service, and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be served. And more extensive outdoor display of materials will be expected and permitted that has frontage or access to I-49. And encourage the development of light to medium intensity commercial development along arterial streets that provide adequate setbacks and buffering to adjacent residential neighborhoods.
Any public comment? Commissioners?
Question?
Yes.
If Sharon, if they do any changes, like he was wanting to re-rent it out, are there going to be any requirements for him to change, like meet commercial standards and things like that? That might already, I don't know if they already are met or not. Most certainly, because any change of use is going to trigger at least some improvements, even if it's just verifying that they have paved parking and just some other basic stuff.
Do you understand?
I didn't hear the question.
Well, the statement is if we rezon this C2, there are some commercial design standards that the property would then have to be sure that it relies with. Or you could ask for variances to that. You may be back in front of us asking for variances to the C2 zoning.
Okay.
That's all, that's all, that's what Ms. Keith wanted to point out was with the C2, there comes some design standards that have to be typically met unless a variance is requested and agreed.
It's got paved parking and all that, so.
Perfect. It was mostly, I wanted to just make sure you were aware.
Yeah, it's got 28 paved parking spots on it.
That's just one of a few things. So just, just so you know, there may be some other requirements for it to meet C2 standards in City of Springdale.
When did I find out about that?
It depends what use the property would have. So it depends who you're going to lease it out to. So if you find some potential tenants, you might just check with the city and find out if that's compatible for, for that C2 location.
Okay. Okay.
This will be called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Ms. Keith. That passes 9-0. Your request to rezon to C2 has been approved.
Thank you. I got a, I got a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Probably hear a lot of complaints and this sort of thing, but after the fifth time that I went to the planning commission office, they still had a smile on their face. And I just love the culture that Patsy's developed there. And the city should be proud of the people that serve there and whatnot. I just wanted to say that from the public examiner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duck.
After the vote. I didn't want to influence anybody.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th. Staff is going to prepare the city council ordinance that will go to that meeting on the 25th.
It's just the three acres, not the five.
Correct.
Next up is R-25-12. This is from Rebecca Neal Thompson Revocable Trust. This is a request to rezon from A1 to SF2 presented by Ms. Thompson.
I'm Rebecca Thompson.
Hello.
I've never done this before, so I'm very nervous.
Oh, you'll be fine.
We live on Wagon Wheel Road. There's an empty pasture between us and the next house. And we would like to build a house for our son in that area. It's 1.67 acres, I think. And apparently two acres is required if it's A1. So we would like to rezon it to SF2 for a single-family dwelling.
Okay. Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city and assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
Is there any public comment? Commissioners? If not, this will be a call for the vote to rezon 1.6 acres, I think you said, from A1 to SF2.
Call for the vote.
Call for a vote, Mr. Cordial. That passes 9-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council the 25th.
Next up is R-25-14 Vazant Fruit Farms Incorporated. This is a request to rezon from A1 to C2 presented by a whole host of people. Please welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Bill Watkins. I'm an attorney in Rogers here representing the applicants. One of the hosts is listed on the application. The staff report does a pretty good job of describing this. Just, I'll add a few comments. It's around 55 acres. It's located on the east side of Highway 265 at the East Apple Blossom intersection. It's currently A1, they're seeking C2. As the staff report notes, C2 request conforms with the future land use plan in progress. Because this is recently annexed land, so it's not included in the current land use plan. It's also important to remember that the Highway 612 interchange is roughly about half a mile to the south of this property as proposed, as it shows up on the master street plan. East Apple Blossom is a collector. 265 is the main arterial, as you would expect. The water and power are available to the property. Sewer is not yet available, so that would have to be addressed at some point in the future whenever this land is, is developed. It's the city of Lowell to the north and their future land use plan also calls for the highway corridor to be commercial. So it conforms with the plans for the adjoining city. The surrounding property on the east and south is unincorporated county land and is primarily single-family residential and agricultural uses. Whatever development does take place on this is going to be a few years out. And staff report supports this request as you're about to hear, and I'll be happy to address any questions.
Thank you for that. Staff comments?
Well, he covered most of my talking points. This recently annexed end piece of property, this request, it aligns with the updated future land use plan in progress, which we identified commercial at this intersection of Apple Blossom Avenue and Old Wire Road. So this request is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any public comment? Commissioners? If not, this will be a call for. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Sorry, I get quick sometimes. I'll look and then if you don't pop up, I may just keep going.
No problem. Also, my first time here. My name is Diane Vigent. I live at the corner of Old Wire and Quail Meadows. So my concern is what the use is going to be. Is that going to be? Is that going to be covered in the next section?
More, it's not covered in this section because this is just a rezon, so we don't talk about usage.
You don't cause, talk about usage at all?
Not on, not on a rezon, no.
Okay.
Now, if it's, if they have a, a large scale plan or something to be discussed further, we will discuss that then.
Okay. So that's sometime in the future. That's, that's actually why I came tonight. We are, the traffic on Old Wire is terrible. We're very concerned about it coming in.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. There's a, you can, you can wait for him or you can speak? You'll wait? Yeah, just to be clear, for rezones, all we're, all we're looking at is a rezon. That is the only thing we're looking at. We're not looking at usage of other land or anything.
Well, my name is Samuel Lozano. I live right behind the property. We just purchased a house on the back of this property in October.
Okay.
And we bought it because it was very peaceful. When we received the notice, we started wondering if they were going to be building something pretty soon. You just said that you don't discuss that because we don't know yet, but, uh, should there, in the future, in the near future, if there's anything that is going to be developed, are the people that live behind this property like us and, uh, my neighbor, are we going to be notified so we can come in here and talk about, you know, whatever's going on on, on that property?
Yeah, let's, staff comment?
Yes. If the development, a development plan is brought forward to our office, one of the requirements is that they have to notify all adjacent property owners by certified mail. We also put a notice sign on the property itself. We also publish a legal notice in the newspaper, and then you can always call planning and just check to see what has been submitted or if anything, if there's anything new, we'll help you where we can.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I was just wondering if there was anything, you know, if, let's say Walmart purchased a land and they built a store in there, are we going to be notified before they actually do anything?
You will. You'll, you'll, you'll get a letter and you'll see a sign on the property, but we haven't had anything submitted yet since we're just talking about the rezoning right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, I just have one comment. Remember, anything that's allowed in C two can go in there. Any of the usage that are listed as permitted uses can go in there, and it's just a matter of whether they meet the minimum standards, but you will be notified. Okay?
Thank you. This will be a call for the vote unless there's more comments.
Call for the vote.
The rezon request passes nine to zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is R twenty-five dash sixteen. Anthony B. Taylor is bishop of the Roman Catholic. I'm not saying all that. Uh, this is a request to rezone from A one to P one presented by Katie Malloy, Core Architects. Hey, Katie.
Hi. So Katie Malloy, Core Architects, speaking on behalf of the bishop and Our Lady of Sorrows, which is currently on the property, um, looking to rezone to P one as the, uh, church on the site is already operating under institutional occupancy. So as we go forth to master plan, um, just looking to get the appropriate zoning as well.
Thank you. Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval. Uses that commonly have moderate to large scale assemblies of people, such as churches, funeral homes, membership organizations, and other institutions should be appropriately located on adequate sized parcels with sufficient space to accommodate the off-street parking and accessory needs. Such uses should be located as to minimize any adverse or undue significant burden on adjacent or adjoining land uses, as well as that portion of the street system.
Thank you. Uh, public comments? Commissioners, any comment? If not, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
This request passes nine to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-fifth.
Next section up is preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. First up is PP twenty-five dash zero five, as well as LP twenty-five dash zero two, Lane Estates, presented by Brixie Engineering and Land Surveying.
Evening.
Hello.
I'm Rebecca Ayer, representing Brixie Engineering. The owners of the property are Richard and Lane, Richard and Carol Lane, uh, and they're wanting to separate off one acre of the south part of the property for sale. At present, there are no development plans in play. All comments have been received and responded to from the city. Do you have any further comments for me?
Staff comments?
If I may just give a little insight to the reason that we are, we are, um, that we are processing this as a preliminary plat, final plat, is that this property has been split multiple times in the past, and it's been done on the staff level administratively. Um, so once that happens enough times, eventually we have to plat it and then bring it to planning commission, which is why we are doing it this way.
Thank you for that. Any public comments regarding this? Commissioners, any questions?
Or if there's any staff comments from?
So did you say, I'm going to make sure I heard you right? I don't know if that's my vote or whatever, but you, so the one acre at the south, you're looking to, uh, sell that property off? Is that what the purpose of it?
The property is currently zone C five, but it's all being used currently as residential. But the one acre on the south part that has a mobile home sitting on it, they are trying to sell that off, and so we are doing this subdivision plat in order to facilitate that.
Understood. Thank you. This will be a motion subject to staff comments for both preliminary plat and final plat.
Patsy, we need you already.
Do we have to vote separately on these two? Do we have to vote for the preliminary plat and then final? Can we take them together?
Take them together.
Thank you.
Motion subject to staff comments.
By Mr. Couch.
Second.
That passes nine to zero, so both the preliminary plat and final plat have been so approved.
And, uh, for the final plat, we need the ordinance in our office by tomorrow if you want to be on next Tuesday's council agenda.
Okay. I'll have to reach out to you by email to find out what I need to do. I'm not familiar.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is RP twenty-five dash zero two, Butterfield Coach Retail Park. Uh, we have a, I guess, a replat, some variances, a waiver request, um, for this property. Hello.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Jorge Baragan with CI Engineering on the survey project manager. If you guys got any questions regarding the plat, we'd be happy to answer them for you. Questions regarding engineering, I think the engineering project manager's here, so they got John DeGonya. Thank you.
Staff only has standard comments.
The applicant agrees to the standard comments. We've been coordinating with the staff extensively. Appreciate that.
Any public comment regarding this request? Commissioners, any questions about the variances?
So what's, can you elaborate what's the reason for the variances on entrances, parking lot orientation, landscaping?
Yes, sir. There are variances for three requests. Um, the first one is, uh, entrance variances which relate to the door access for the convenience store. Um, our client has, uh, the main front entrance, uh, door access. Code, as we understand it, working with the planning department, also identifies a, a secondary door, uh, facing to the north. Um, and so we've, we've, uh, identified and worked with staff about requesting the variants for, for us just to have the main access door, which is very consistent with other convenience stores within the community and, and also what, what our client Walmart does on a national level.
And this, this development plan is being reviewed as a non-large scale, um, since in a platted subdivision, and so that's the reason that the development plan itself is not being brought before, uh, planning commission for a vote. It's being done at the staff level.
Can you answer, is there, is there the same amount of landscaping as we typically require, just placed in different places?
Yes, that's correct, sir. Regarding the, uh, the parking lot orientation, um, we've got seven, uh, parking stalls in the front, um, instead of the, the five, the, that, that would be typically required by, by your planning department. And the way we are proposing mitigating that is by having, uh, trees and additional landscaping in that area to separate that from Butterfield Coach Road.
Thank you for that.
And the street improvements, are they, I mean, everything's fine and what we're asking them to do would be inconsistent with what everything else is around it, or what would be the thought on that?
So there's an existing sidewalk on Butterfield Coach and on Cass Drive. The one on Cass, Cass is up to standards. The Butterfield Coach side would require a ten-foot sidewalk under our new master street plan. Um, so I think for this one would be a really good project for a payment in lieu of improvements. Butterfield Coach is developing very quickly, um, and I, I could see the city taking that on as a larger improvement project in the future.
Is your customer open to a payment in lieu for that part?
Yes, they are.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? So, uh, are we good taking the variance requests altogether? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Ms. Keith. Yeah, we should do replat first, sorry. We're doing the replat first. This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
By Mr. Usain.
Second.
By Mr. Clement. The replat passes nine to zero. Now we'll do variances. Uh, the call for votes already been made by Ms. Keith. That passes nine to zero with the statement that they will be providing the same amount of landscaping as normal, just in different areas. The last is waiver or street improvements. That has been modified to be, the motion would be to forward to city council a recommendation to accept their lieu, uh, payment in lieu of. Motion by Mr. Couch.
Second.
By Mr. Usain. That passes nine to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the replat, if you want the replat heard next Tuesday at council, we need the ordinance in our office by tomorrow. And for the waiver, staff will prepare the ordinance that is scheduled to go to council on the twenty-fifth for that.
Thank you.
Next up is B twenty-five dash fourteen. This is board of adjustments section. This is a variance requ, uh, request for reduction of rear setback from twenty foot to five foot, a variance for reduction of side setback from eight foot to five foot, presented by Isaiah Desmond.
Good evening.
Hello.
I recently got a permit to put a shed in our backyard, and when I learned about the setback being twenty feet from the back fence, I had some concerns because that would place it in an area in our yard that generally accumulates quite a bit of water when it rains, kind of like it is today. Um, and also there are, you can see in that picture there, two trees. Uh, we just recently took them out, but the tree stumps are still there, and it would place the shed in the way, uh, or they would be in the way of the shed. So I was requesting that the setbacks be reduced so that I could put it in a more, um, advantageous spot.
Forgive me for a simple question, but could you not just remove the tree stomps?
I could, um, and I've thought about doing that as well. Um, that would still, uh, even if I did that, the shed would still probably be in a low lying area, so there still would be a little bit of water accumulation there, and, um, I was concerned about that causing some foundational issues for the shed.
How big is the shed?
It's twelve by sixteen.
Is there any public comment regarding this request? Commissioners, comment?
Don't you have to have a seat down, bottom, under it before you put it on there?
Uh, yes, I'm planning on putting gravel base, yes.
Is, isn't there a house on the, I don't know if that's north or south, but on the backside of that?
I'm sorry, on the north side?
On the other side of your property line where the shed is going to be? There's another house right behind that, isn't there?
There are two properties north of it, uh, and then there are sheds on the other side of that fence, uh, and on the fence line.
But will you be building the shed there yourself onsite, or is this a pre-engineered building that you're bringing in and placing in that location?
I'll be building it myself.
You'll be building it yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any reason why you couldn't, I mean, on the side setback, I understand the twenty, is there a reason you couldn't come over and meet the eight foot on, and meet eight foot setbacks or?
I likely could still meet the eight foot setback. The twenty is mostly the, most of the concern.
What, what type of construction materials would you be using? Would you be using non-combustible construction materials or at least outside exterior cladding? Or can you give detail on what type of material you'd be using?
Uh, my plan is for the footing to put gravel base and then skids on top of that, and then stick framing on top. So highly combustible?
Yeah, there, there's a little bit of a concern there because you already have sheds that are up close against the property lines. You know, we don't see that as a good reason to go put another one there. That's more of something that we would want, that we would, that we would add an increase to that opposition. And so the fact that they're already there, we're not going to ask them to move theirs. But there's a concern with adding another one there.
Yes, sir. I understand that, though. And the five foot is, um, because that's what I was told the minimum was, um, it wouldn't necessarily need to be five feet, and I probably would have it a little bit farther than five feet. Uh, but twenty feet, like I said, would put it in kind of a, a bad spot.
I feel like I'm, y'all have anything further from us, the fire department?
Commissioners, any other further questions?
You, you feel more comfortable on the eight? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to oppose. Yeah, we're going to oppose anything that falls within, um, any variances of the setback requirements because, you know, um, no offense to this gentleman, but we would, we want the buildings as far apart as we can, so we, we oppose those things. And so I was just curious if there was a good reason why he couldn't meet the eight foot on those.
So it sounds like you might be able to meet your eight foot side setback, right, on the west side? And your rear setback to the north, what do you, how far in do you think you could get that? Um, because as you get closer to the property line, the more the fire department dislikes it. So how, you could get to eight, ten, fifteen?
Be doable, for sure.
Mark, can I ask a question?
You may.
You said sixteen, twelve by sixteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is too large for a portable structure. Portable structures can't exceed a hundred and twenty square feet, so you'll have to put it on a slab. You can't put it on skids.
Uh, when I got the permit, I called, or I spoke to someone in the property department, and they told me I could do skids.
Well, the maximum size of portable structure is a hundred and twenty square feet.
So it must be a concrete slab. Okay.
And if it's a low area, can you not fill that and establish an area so you can put it there and put whatever drainage you need around that low area? Is it, the whole backyard is a low area or just this corner or what?
Uh, it's a good portion of the backyard, mostly the middle of the backyard.
If, if his request is denied, what's his repercussion? If he can come back in a month, is it table for, I mean, is it a year? I can't remember.
It has to go to council.
It's to go to council.
Yeah. Or you can't do the same variance for a year.
Right. So my question to you is typically, the only time I've seen this commission give a little bit on these setbacks, if there's a lot of reason why you can't get it closer to the house, you don't really have that here, not to the stream that we normally would see. So my thought would be if you're willing to table this request, work through it a little bit more with staff, understand that you now have to put a foundation down if you want to build this size, and maybe there's a way that you can get this within compliance, or maybe at least a lot closer than, than the current, where you're currently showing that unit. But that's up to you. You can either do that or you can ask us to vote for it tonight. What would you like to do?
Sorry, say that one more time.
So you can either request a table, kind of work through some of these details, and possibly come back with a different variance request that maybe is something a little bit more favorable. Or maybe you've solved the problem, you don't need a variable, a variance request. variance request. Or you can ask us to vote for it.
Also, I know this area has poor drainage. Talked to the neighbor about it over the past, you know, five years or so, but we'd be happy to come out and look at it and see if we could recommend anything to help you guys, if that's desired.
Okay. That'd be excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I think our goal is to help you build the shed you want in your backyard without getting into these setbacks. I think if we could accomplish that, I think we'd all be happy. So if that's something you're willing to kind of work through, we'd be happy to work through it with you.
I would be willing for that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So you're willing to table this, to work through that, and possibly bring it back if needed in the future?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you just want to call engineering, and we can set up a little visit to go look at it, my name is Katie.
Okay.
Thanks, Katie. Moving forward to the waiver section. Next up is W 25-09, Veronica Garcia. Request is to waiver street improvement sidewalk on Suttle Drive. Hello.
Hello. So that's where I'll be building my house, and nobody else in my neighborhood has a sidewalk. So I don't, I think it would look inconsistent if I build one.
Understood. Any public comment? Commissioners?
How close is that to any schools?
Pretty.
Yes?
Yeah. Yeah.
And it looks like the neighborhood's already built out, like it's not going to be, we're going to build future stuff there. It's pretty established.
No, there's only other one empty lot, other than mine, so.
Yeah, this is within former Bethel Heights, and there's even a note on the plat of the subdivision saying.
Johnson.
I like Fable.
They're similar.
Yeah, they're similar.
That's a pretty steep hill, too, over there, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, what I want to do instead of, well, I didn't, I didn't even know how to build a sidewalk until I read the thing, but.
Most people don't.
Yeah, because I, like, if nobody has sidewalk, why would I do one? But I was actually thinking of doing kind of a ditch to that little thingy for the water. So I think that would make more sense.
You should call Katie first, before any digging.
Yes.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I spoke with.
I think you talked to Chris, maybe, or maybe it was me.
It was gonna be very, like, just a little something extra, because my front door neighbors told me that one time their house flooded, and I don't want that to happen again.
I think that, yeah, that inlet there has overflowed, so, yeah, any grading would definitely help.
Yeah, because I don't know who's supposed to maintain that, that little grate area, but it, like, fills up with leaves. It's not on my property, it's on my neighbors'.
Right. It's typically the property owner's responsibility, but if it's, if it's, like, clogged and flooding, you can always call Public Works, and we can come unclog it for you.
Yeah, and also, just because my neighbors, like, call the cops on me a lot, because I cut down the trees and stuff, so I don't want to make it more, I don't want to make them more mad if I become different from them, so, yeah.
Any other comments? Otherwise, this will be a motion to forward to City Council with recommendation to prove or deny this request. So motion by Mr. Austin? Second by Mr. Cardio.
Was it deny?
It was to approve.
Approve the waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
She picked a good night to bring this in.
We was, we were confused about which way.
Sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Staff will prepare the ordinance.
So that passes nine zero. Our motion to City Council to approve your waiver will be forwarded to them.
Okay. What do I need to do next?
We're going to prepare the ordinance, and we will bring it to City Council on March 25th. You're encouraged to come. It'll be right here at 6:00 PM on the 25th, on Tuesday.
Okay. And do I need to bring anything?
No. You're not even required to come, it's just encouraged if you do want to speak out, or if they have questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is L 23-01. This is Mill Creek Nursing Facility. Previously, it was L 20-13. We've looked at this a couple of times, it's on 48th Street, just off of I-49. This is presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. We're requesting a revision to the approved large scale. When the building was permitted through Building Department, the plan was flipped, and so we are here asking to reapprove this, this facility. Slightly different square footage, but overall looked very consistent with what was previously approved.
Why didn't you guys come back before you went vertical with this project? Why didn't you come back through planning commission?
Yeah, I mean, so I think mid-last year, it was brought to our attention that, you know, this needed to come back. I think there was just some miscommunication with staff, because, you know, we prepared the exhibit, we prepared the revision. We just never made it to this forum, so we're, we're here asking now.
Can you touch on what some of the changes are? You said mirrored, decreased a little bit. What else?
Decreased by how much? I guess, what, what were the size changes? No, this is, so I just think there was some discrepancies in, in our plan, in the architect's plan. The, the overall square footage is 91,000 square feet, I believe. I don't have the particular in front of me, but I can get that if I need to.
So is this was being built, is proposed to be built now, was highlighted right here?
Yes.
Is the drawing that shows what was, what we looked at, what we approved? That's what we approved? Can you toggle back and forth? Sorry, I didn't mean to, don't mean to make you this person, but.
I mean, so the, so the back of, the back of the house, or the southern portion, you can see where the driveway for the ambulance is on the left side. If you go to the new plan, it's on the right side. The, the amenity areas are flopped with the building, right? There is an ask for a small maintenance building on the south side there. It's noted. It's just everything within that builder's, inside the builder's box there that, that was modified.
So you've added a small building, maintenance building, but you reduced square footage. Seems like all the parking lots stay the same?
That's correct.
Do the entrance and exit remain the same? Do we know?
Yes, it is the same.
If you would like, I kind of reviewed through the two of them, and I have.
Sure.
I have some comments.
Why don't you give us some comments, maybe that'll help us all.
There's a couple that are pretty simple about some, some of the polls, if they're public, private. I never did find where any streetlights were out there. Can I borrow the highlighter? You have an area in here where your parking count is wrong. In the front part of the building here, there's been a sidewalk added, and on the original plan, there was landscaping there. So the question is, is what is going to happen to the landscaping that was approved? And then also, what's the, the reason for the new sidewalk?
Is it the landscape plan that was resubmitted?
That was just resubmitted late yesterday. I have not looked at this.
No, I submitted a whole package, not yesterday, it was previous to that.
I, I didn't see it until yesterday, then.
I mean, I made the submittal on February 11th, was the most recent one. I had recent, I had previously submitted that as well, but, I mean, I believe we're landscaping those areas in accordance with the previously approved plan?
Okay. Also, reviewing it, and I know part of that is, part of this is not you, but interior rooms that are shown there, there, it looks like there's rooms been added in certain areas. Looks like some of them have been subtracted in certain areas. Let me go to the highlighted one that you, the one that I reviewed. There's sidewalks been added in this area right here. The building is now closer to the parking lot than it was originally. This area over here, there's been another sidewalk added, and it's also closer to the parking lot that originally was. We have.
Sounds to me like the, I mean, we added sidewalk, I mean, is that probably a benefit for the project?
Well, the original question that we sent to you was to send us something that gave us a list of what was being changed, and to highlight it on there, and what we received was the whole building and the whole project highlighted without a list of the stuff that I've found. There are some other areas, green space areas on the original one that are no longer there. Some of the stuff that I have is, we will need the new landscaping plan, which it looks like you submitted. Again, I haven't had a chance to review that. The bed count, how is it changed from the stamped version to the revision? Total square footage on the revision, revision shows to be corrected to match the new architectural plans, but previous conversations stated that the square footage of the building that was shown on the approved and stamped plans was not correct. So what was the origin, true original square footage, and is this new one smaller or larger? Elevations for the building have also changed. We'll need a list of what changes were made, along with updated colors that will be used. Elevations received were black and white. So along with updated material types, we also need percentages, percentages of each type of material used. For the proposed building, we will need the same information. It also looks as if the information submitted only gives me the front and side elevation. So I assume that the other side would look like the one, but what is the back of the building going to look like? Again, list of colors to be used, materials and the material percentages. And then also, with the changes of the building, the moving closer to the parking lots, green space being moved, sidewalks being added, we're going to need an updated lighting plan, because I would assume wall packs and other things have also moved.
We submitted full set of revised drawings, including landscaping and lighting. So we've made those updates and revisions. The building is going to look very similar, if not the same, as, as what was approved previously. So, obviously, we'll work, work the comments out with staff. Feel like, tried to make the, the resubmittal in full, so that there was clarifying elements in.
Does engineering have any comments? You're fine. I think the issue that I'm having is just, I hear our staff telling me they haven't been able to review some of the changes that have happened. You tell me you submitted it, I think February 11th is what you stated. So I, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't, I'm just kind of stuck, because I don't, it, it sounds like to me that staff hasn't been able to review all the, all the changes that you made, and to feel comfortable enough about going forward. So I'm, I'm kind of stuck myself.
I mean, I received correspondence back from Sharon that the submittal was made, and, and so I, I guess I'm, I didn't know there was any more information that was needed. We, we provided that, and so I, I feel like that, you know, we've given our, our side.
Sure.
I don't know why we're just now receiving.
Were our staff comments based off that last full submittal? Because I know you guys did submit a full, but I, I did not, I did not look at it.
My review is off of this, because this is all that I had received. The, the new submittal, I saw it yesterday, and it shows that it was updated on 3-3, which was yesterday.
My, my feedback would be consistent with Mark of not saying any of this is bad, but for me to know how the rooms changed, it looked like the parking lot's consistent. But with how things changed interior-wise, I don't want to make assumptions, and I'm not saying you did anything wrong, just, but hearing back and forth, I mean, I could approve it because it looks good, but I don't know how much has materially changed from the previous, other than it looks like the parking lot stood the same.
I mean, I will say again, I mean, this, this was permitted as the current version by Building Department, and that's what they're, you know, in process of building at this point.
If you guys would be able to give us any detail as far as, and I know, I know you probably have, have a full plate as far as what changes were made, can you elaborate on that a little bit? What changes were made?
I didn't know I was, I needed to, you know, provide a full narrative of, of minor sidewalk changes, and, you know, I mean, basically, this, this thing just got flipped over.
Right.
You know, it's the same building, it got flipped over, same landscaping, same lighting, you know.
That's, I understand. I'm just trying, trying to find clarity, like.
Well, you say that, but like, the drawing we had, had 16,000 square foot more than what you're saying is being built now. And so, either we have bad drawings, or.
The one from 2019, yes. The original approved large scale had 101,000.
Which we saw, I don't, we've never, like, the things we're seeing today, I haven't seen. Does that make sense? I mean, like, the, I didn't see the, the shop building that you've added.
Right. That was the one thing that did get added, right? That, that maintenance building. We provided full architectural elevations for that building, as well as new architectures for the, the whole, the whole building as well.
I mean, I'm not against the project. I think overall, the project is going to be great for the community, it's going to, it's, overall, it's fine, but I just, personally, I feel uncomfortable, both one way and another, on how people tell me they haven't been able to review what you're building. They're not you, I mean, obviously, what the customer's building. Please.
So my name is Rick Mooney. I'm the general contractor on the project. I'm here also to represent the owners. So we, this project, actually, we had a stop work order on this project because of these issues right here. And I've, I've been kind of sending some emails back, I think back in November, when this kind of started. And my understanding at that particular time was that there was a disconnect between, I guess, the engineers and the architect, that somehow the plan got flipped. I don't know how that happened, but that was my understanding, that the floor plan, the back edge of it, I guess, where the drive-in, it got mirrored from one side to the other, and that we was going to need, that the engineers was going to need to go back and correct their plans to mirror what the architect has done. And so, you know, we had got, we, we built this exact building, actually, we built it three times. We just finished one up at Hampton, at, at Rogers, doing the exact same building, same exterior, everything is exactly the same. And, and I think the staff has done a great job of, of allowing us to move forward, because we did get a stop work order, I think, about two weeks ago, and we had to pull guys off the job. And so, I mean, the owners has got a $25 million investment here. I mean, and this is a state-of-the-art, of, state-of-the-art facility that I feel like you guys approved originally. And I don't think we're changing anything. I understand we've got some issues here, evidently with the engineers of not maybe responding back like they should. I, I'm not really sure. But, you know, I, I'm hoping that we don't shut our project down, that we can work through these issues here. Because, you know, I've got 30-something people out here working on this job.
Yeah, I understand. Thomas money. Is there any mechanism that we can ensure that, go ahead, Tim?
For, for planning, I appreciate everyone trying to be cooperative. The contractors, ESI, staff is trying to be. The last communication from planning was that the changes were deemed significant enough that we wanted to bring it back before the commissioners for a vote on these changes. And that was last summer through communication, and the next thing we know, we're told that it's gone vertical and everything is being built, which is why we had to stop, come together, and figure out where this miscommunication happened.
So it sounds like what we're all saying is that we may not have enough information to make an informed decision tonight. At least, I don't feel super comfortable with the information that we have.
Are there creative ways to work through this of if? I don't know how quickly y'all can work through stuff, and I don't want to sign y'all up for things, but I don't know what the things have to happen to.
Well, I know the G C wants to continue working over the next 30 days, which, so my normal thing, well, let's table this, let everybody visit, but I know he, he doesn't want to stop his crew, and I get that. So my thought is, if there's a way for them to continue to, I don't know how far along you are in the building. I drive by this thing all the time, I can't see it from the road. But to me, if there's a way for them to keep working, but us, I don't, you know, it's one of those things where I'm not worried about something nice getting built, but I am worried about something getting built that we didn't approve, or we have problems with, there's nothing we can do about now. That's, that's the only issue I have.
So if you're going vertical, are you just working on the building right now, and, or are you already doing the site, like?
What phase of the project are you in?
Final, yeah. What phase?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
What phase are you in with the project, with the construction itself?
So we're just about completely in the dry, on the exterior. The parking lot and areas, stuff like that, I don't think we've, have we done curb on it yet?
No curb.
No, no curb. So anything on the exterior, I don't think, you know, we're, we're really, it's holding us up right now on that part of it? I mean, we can, if we need to make some changes, we can on the exterior part of it. We're doing, I mean, we're. We're doing, I mean, we're drywalled on the inside on some of the areas, so.
Is that what you'll be doing the next 30 days is primarily finishing out, getting completely in the dry on the building?
Yeah, we're doing most of our MEP trades on the inside, so.
So that's what I was thinking is if we can pause, you know, allow them to continue the vertical, but wait to do any site, additional site work until this has been fully vetted? If that's, if that's a path forward.
So I guess the answer, what we're asking is table this request and bring it back next month. During that time, you continue to work on the interior of the building. Let staff be able to review all the site changes and make sure we're happy with what's going on. Then bring it back and they'll say, hey, we're good with it and then we'll feel a lot better as commissioners. Saying one way or another, I think that's where we're at. I don't know if that's possible from your side.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything that that'll affect us. Which I, I mean, I understand we won't get a building permit finalized out until this project is accepted, you know. So to me, that should be, you know.
Well, that's true, but it's really hard to announce to somebody a CFO when they've got all, I mean, right now, we're only halfway down the street, but when we get all the way down the street, it's really hard to pull back then. So I think if you're okay with tabling this and let us work on the exterior, the landscaping, the site, all of that, while you continue to work on the interior, bring it back in a month. Everybody, we'll get a better, more thorough report. Everybody understands exactly, you know, the questions in mind and we'll get a better input from our staff. I think that'll help all of us feel more comfortable with going, yeah, we approve of this, let's move forward. Is that something you're open to doing? Go ahead.
Is there any additional submittal requirements that we need to make? I mean, I received correspondence back, I mean, we turned a full set of drawings in on 2-11. And so I don't know what else, you know, we didn't receive any additional comments. And so I'm just trying to understand, you know, what we need to do to help staff make the best decision possible.
If it's a full submission, if it's a full submission, there shouldn't be additional items required. But tomorrow or this week, staff, we can go through it and see, based on that last submittal that you did that we received recently. And we, I want to be sure that we have the correct and accurate comments reflected that we provide back to you guys of the most updated ones.
I guess my question is, why didn't we get that review before this meeting so that we could have addressed those comments in full? So we don't have to continue, you know, the conversation? Because, I mean, my thought was we were going to come in here, we're going to look at it, hey, great, it's good, right? But obviously that's not the way it is. And so I'm just.
I think that's a fair question. I see Patsy moving the microphone.
You know, this is a really unique situation in that I've been here since the beginning and I don't ever remember a time when we go out to inspect it and find out it's totally different than what we approved. So we're kind of in new territory because we always expect a developer to build what was being approved. And when you see that it's been flipped over and there's new sidewalks and there's another building out there, it really puts us kind of in a bad situation. So hopefully, we never get to that point again because the whole idea is what you get approved is what you build. So I think we're kind of all have to work through this and I think the idea of let him go ahead and work on the inside. Let's get through all the details that has changed so we know what everybody is comfortable with it and then come back and get a large scale that reflects what's being built. And that's backwards, but that's kind of where we are.
Yeah. That's the only thing I know to feel comfortable from the planning commission and continue to help this project, which we all want completed, to be completed without causing any more issues and time delays.
I mean, I totally understand.
Okay, and I can't tell you if there's everything there that we need because we haven't looked at it yet. I mean, we kind of were put in a bad position because we didn't know what was going on. And we'll go back and assess it and make sure, and as much information as you can provide to us of what's changed, the easier it is to find it, the better.
Would you like to table this request for tonight and bring it back in a month?
Yeah, I guess I may take a little issue with talking about it not being built the correct way. As far as I know, we built exactly what our plans had.
Right, I don't know that we've seen your plans.
Yeah, and I think that's something that's very unique, that the plans you're building off of is not the plans that were submitted that we have on file. And that's, doesn't happen very often. But anyway, it happened this time, we need to fix it. And I don't know, when we go out there with a pre-con, we got to make sure everybody's got the same set of plans, I guess. I don't think that ever came up before, as far as I know.
It's unique.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're trying to do, was satisfy that.
Sure. So we'll table this request, bring it back in a month. Hopefully between now and 30 days from now, we'll get all this resolved, we'll all be on the same page and we'll let you go do your job.
And there's no stop work order, they can continue doing on the building what you need to.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's what you need to be able to go ahead and finish it out. And I don't know that changes of the interior makes that much difference to us. When you flip the whole thing over in a different way to enter it and different sidewalks really creates a concern from what we had approved. Size of the building is a big thing.
The plans we're building off has the mirrored plan on it and everything. Correct, so I don't.
That's where we had a disconnect somewhere. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Next up is L-24-10, White Road Retail Approval. This is an extension request by ESI. Party Gra.
Thank you, Brandon Rush, ESI. We had a pre-con on this project last week, but we have not got the footings installed yet, so we're asking for a extension.
Any public comments, staff comments?
They just got a grading permit and they're ready to go.
Yeah. Commissioner, any questions about this extension request? If not, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Couch. That passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Courtney Hollensworth, Auto Body Expansion Approval Extension, also by ESI.
So we're good to proceed? Okay.
What was the question?
We had the wrong vote, we're good.
10-4. Go ahead.
Same, same situation, haven't had the pre-con yet, but contractor's been selected and we're working on, or actually we have had a pre-con on this one. Same situation.
Sure. Any public comments? Staff? Commissioners? If not, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Miss Keith?
There are some technical difficulties. Give me one moment.
You have one moment.
Just let us know if we need to do a voice vote.
That passes 9-0. Thank you. Next up is L-24-15, The Big Deal Approval Extension. By Swoop.
I'm here standing in place of Mr. Swoop.
Sure.
Reggie Brassfield, owner of The Big Deal Property, or property of 3378. Just requesting an extension for the approval for the Big Deal project.
So what's this project looking like? I know I get asked at least daily about this project. I want you to know that.
Sharon hadn't told you?
No, well, tell me, Sharon.
She has all of the secret files.
State of the art pickleball. 50 courts, 70?
23 indoor, 30 outdoor. So 53.
Isn't there like a stadium seating in the center?
If you want to stay after, I'll show you.
I'm sure you would. This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Hussein. That passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Next up is L-24-18, First Star Apartments. Ask for an extension presented by ESI.
Thank you, we're just looking for a one-year extension on this, should be asking for a pre-con in the very near future.
What is this yellow line, Brandon? Or red or yellow, whatever, mustard, whatever color that is?
This, this here, Brandon, we put a picture of an informal plat that was recently approved, I believe, recorded for this property. I think we're just curious, we're going to ask the commission to approve an extension. How does this, I guess, affect the current project or any future of it, putting a property line on that northern part?
I can try to address. So the property owner came to us, asked to try to get this split into two properties for purposes of closing on the southern piece, which is the current phase one. And then, you know, it was basically for a transaction that needed to happen, right? And so I think we've been working with staff to try to finalize the plans for construction and also taking into account this lot line. So I think we've had those conversations ongoing. We're just, you know, obviously trying to relay the extension with the final approval of the plans.
Does the current owner own both tracks, one and two?
Currently, yes.
Are they planning to sell?
Yes.
One of those tracks or both of the tracks?
So before construction will commence, they're going to make a transaction, close a construction loan for the current phase one portion. And then that's when it will change ownership.
So they will retain ownership of track two?
Yes.
I have a question. Why is the line in the middle of the parking lot instead of getting all of this, that's part of this phase as part of this phase and on that piece of property? Because the question is, how do we get that dumpster if that phase never happens? And how do we get that extra parking lot?
No, I mean, all of that, shown in gray, will be built with phase one with the current plan. That's not going to be phase two of the project. There's an access easement across the parking area that will service the northern portion of the property via this driveway. But all of the improvements will be built. As shown.
It just seems strange that you'd put it through the middle of the parking lot. It just gives a level of concern about, how do we get that dumpster in there? How do we get all that? What if they decide to sell it off as a separate lot tomorrow? Or one after this done and then we don't get that part done? Because that's part of your calculations for this phase, right? To meet the parking requirements, the dumpster and all that. So it's basically going to another piece of property that, I mean, I guess we have to have a bill of assurance that shows that those will be completed with this first phase if we go ahead and let the lot split happen. Can we do that?
That's fine.
I mean, we got to have some way to know that those things are going to be done when we let the property split. You split properties because it can be sold off separately. I know it's for financing and that kind of stuff too, but it creates a situation where it can be sold off separately and it doesn't have, the other lot doesn't have enough frontage, does it have enough frontage on a public street to meet by itself?
Yes, and that's part of the reason why it came in this way, right? Because if it didn't, it would be tandem.
Yeah.
Right, and so that's the reason it came in this way and was approved this way. And so if we need to provide a bill of assurance that those improvements will be made, and I think that's.
I think that alleviates some concern about when and how they get done.
It's just, I mean, just odd to see improvements on a separate lot or tract in the same phase. So yeah, I think if you're saying you're willing to offer a bill of assurance so that everything that's gray on this image will be complete in phase one, that definitely changes the, at least my point of view from the extension request. Any other questions, comments? Commissioners? Lots of them buildings. This will be a call for the vote?
For the extension.
For the extension and with the bill insurance that everything's shown on whatever that document is, I don't know how we can refer, reflect that, will be completed with this phase.
Call for the vote based on that.
Call for vote, Mr. Couch. That passes 9-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is Planning Directors Report. First one.
All right, first meeting and I already forgot my notes. At least I remember most of them. All right, March 17th, we are having a joint council committee meeting and planning work session. Planning commissioners, we're asking you to be here at 5:00. It'll be here in council chambers. Committee starts at 5:30, but that way we can chat about planning stuff first. We're going to have H3 Design Studio coming in from St. Louis to present some of the results and an update on the downtown parking study and the downtown southeast housing study. And we are all, we're looking forward to get that information, being able to present that to you guys, to commissioners and council and anyone that wants to attend. Secondly, there was a rezone, I think it's R-2509, Horse Water LLC. It was at the southeast corner of Robbins and Wagon Wheel. Council has asked to table that, so that is going to be heard next Tuesday on the 11th. Any other important information, Patsy?
I think she says we're good. With that, I'll move to adjourn. Thank you all.